The Board of Finance Special Meeting, Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Do you think it stands to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of Oregon. One nation under God, indivisible, with a reading and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is public remarks. If you come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and try and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Anyone? Do we have anyone online?
Good evening. My name is Matt Anckley, and I live in Bevan Boulevard. Thank you all for your service through town. I appreciate that you have a difficult choice to make regarding the budget and many factors to consider. As you make those decisions, I ask that we do them with all the life in East Hampton at the forefront of your minds. That means preserving services that keep us safe, like a well-staffed and trained police department and an ambulance association that is fully supported. It means funding services that enrich our community, like the ever-popular library and Parks and Recreation Department with a wide range of programs for residents of all ages. And it certainly means providing our schools, teachers, administrators, and specialists with financial support to continue to give the best possible education to our students. East Hampton Public Schools are the pride of this town. So many families were drawn to this community because of the public education system, families that support the tax base and local businesses that increase part property values and allow East Hampton to grow. We need to keep this system strong and not chip away at our educational foundation. Our educators are already working at a bargaining rate, especially compared to local communities. Our per-people expenditures are lower than most of our neighbors. We are not spending exorbitantly on classroom supplies, and if spending a little more is certainly worth considering. Yet, year after year, our students keep achieving. Our graduates go on to excellent schools and colleges or directly into good careers. And our teachers and staff are recognized as some of the best in Connecticut. And now is not the time to halt progress. Yes, the proposed budget increase spending is nearly sixty percent. But what positions or programs are being added because of the increase? Essentially, nothing. This is the cost of maintaining the bare minimum of what our students deserve. Let's continue to make progress. Please continue to make the right investments in our town. East Hampton schools are more than worth it. This is not the time to cut the education budget. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anyone online? Maybe nine. On the side of the agenda is to discuss and consider town council's proposed amendments, the ugly tax freeze program.
Thank you, everyone, for coming here and talking to you guys tonight. So I am here representing the town council and a committee which consists of the town council. Thank you for Mr. Ray Allison for being here, so if I miss anything, please come up and kick me off. So we've been working to try to create more and better tax relief programs. This is specifically for seniors and fully disabled. Currently in the town, we have two programs. We have a tax credit program and we have a tax freeze program. Problem with both of those programs is nobody qualifies for them. I don't believe we have anyone using these programs. And the Commission on Aging came to us last year during their report saying that they just found out about this. And like, this is a good idea, but nobody can use it. And it's mainly because of the income limits that are set by the state on these two programs. Right now, it's thirty-six thousand dollars single for an income limit and forty-nine thousand dollars for married income limit. There is another title in the state statutes that allows the town to create another tax relief program. And this one can be changed whichever way we feel can actually help our citizens the best. And by doing that, the way you have to do it is the town manager has to appoint a taxpayer committee of no less than five people. And from the start of that, you have sixty days to get a recommendation from the Board of Finance, get it passed by the town, and get an ordinance created so it can be added to the town code. Once it's created, it does not have to go through this process. There's no time limit. The Commission on Aging can come to the town council, to the Board of Finance, and say, hey, this is a good program, but we need to amend it to help more people. So what town, so what this committee and what we're proposing is that we almost mirror the tax-free relief program that we have in place now. Couple things will change, though. One is the age limits are changing to sixty-five years, and that's also with our current program now, the state statutes have changed. The other thing is, instead of five years as a resident, minimum of ten years as a resident. And I say that only because I want to help people. We all want to help people, but I also don't want people to move here and retire here specifically for more tax-free programs. I really want to just help the citizens that are here and have been here and can actually call themselves long-term East Hampton residents. And the third, the biggest change, is that we're going to change the income level to fifty thousand dollars, married or single. And I know for married, that doesn't make that much of a difference. For single, it's a fourteen thousand dollar difference, and that's comparable to our surrounding towns. Hadham is fifty-five thousand dollars, but they're a minimum of fifteen-year residency. And East Hadham is fifty thousand dollars and ten-year residency. There's a lot of different ways we can go with this program. We thought this was the best way to get it off the ground and going and in control of the town's hand. I know the Commission on Aging was very in favor of adding a new program that could help more of the citizens, since they were talking about that's the biggest concern, just senior citizens don't know how they're going to retire and stay here. So with that being said, I don't know if there's any questions, but I'm asking for your recommendation for the Town Council Committee and the Town Council to create an ordinance, add in the new property tax-free relief program for seniors and fully disabled based off section twelve dash one-two-nine and none of the state statutes.
I have one question.
Yes.
Do you foresee any difficulty terminating the two programs that we currently have? We certainly don't want to overlap between three programs.
So we don't have to terminate. We can't terminate, and some are required. One of them is a local option set by it. But, I mean, you can only freeze your property tax once, so the other one, it doesn't matter. And you probably won't be able to qualify for the other tax credit program that's in place at thirty-six thousand dollars. And if you do, you would be credited a hundred and fifty dollars off of your property taxes each year. So it is set in place that if you do qualify for this one and you do qualify for another one, you can do both. The other part, I did forget to mention that the tax freeze, it is a zero percent mean. That is what the current program is now. And the Committee on the Council did vote to keep that in place, so there will be no financial impact on the town. It will be paid off after the residence is sold or no longer in their possession. And so it's not a direct financial hit. It might be a delayed financial hit, but overall, no financial impact.
Any other questions?
I'm missing anyone?
I think you got the question.
So they can make a motion?
Sure.
So it be resolved that the Board of Finance recommends the town council approve a new tax relief program that would freeze taxes at the current level by deferring any increase until such time the property is sold or the owner ceases to occupy it as the primary residence.
Second then? Colin Davis?
Discussion.
Discussion? Which we kind of did.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Just one quick question. As a point of clarification, roughly how many people we think will be able to now take advantage of this policy with the change?
We're going to probably ballpark it at maybe a hundred people.
I think that's probably the outside of the reality. There are four that qualify for the current freeze.
Or four that participate.
That participate, that's true. We don't know how many qualify or participate in the current freeze program. But you would anticipate that that'll grow based on the income limit change.
All set? Colin Davis?
Thank you very much.
Next up is the Pledge of Presentations. Town Manager?
Can I be the first?
Sure.
Yep, I need permission again. Wait, no, I think we got it. Screen catch-up, there we go.
Can you get them on here?
Are they, they're not in front of you? You should power up. Sometimes that happens.
Thank you.
Did they come? Back of the room is off.
Yeah, I turned that off.
Can't even stare off in the back of the booth.
Just switch the.
Do you have one? You're good. Everybody else has it? Sorry for the technical problem there. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about, a little bit tonight about the draft budget that the Board of Finance has in front of it. I'll run through about nineteen slides or so that will try to, at a high level, explain to you kind of what the budget is today for your consideration. Here we go. So as always, I want to take this first moment to just remind everybody that this budget is developed in cooperation with all of the town's departments. And I will not take one more breath without saying, with a great deal of help for all of them, including myself, from the Finance Department, including Jeff, to get it to the point it's at even right now. As always, the budget proposes and attempts to look into the future of the community, not just the next upcoming fiscal year. We try to make sure that we're looking long-term, both in revenue projections and capital activities and staff growth, et cetera, et cetera. Ordinarily, a budget is focused, in this case, on maintaining the existing services and programs of the town and planning for that into the future. This budget has a little bit of a change, a little bit of a difference in it. As you saw in my transmittal memo, I talked about public safety. That has been a theme that has come up here in the last year or two about how the community wants to proceed overall with public safety. So there are some aspects of public safety included in here, including the East Hampton Ambulance Association's request for additional support and some funding in the Police Department for an additional position in a lieutenant. There are also smaller figures included in the Fire Department, but I think long-term, that's going to be a similar conversation in the future. Additionally, this current budget includes the conversion of two part-time positions in the senior center to one full-time position to improve the ability to serve the older adult community of the population at that facility. And lastly, I'll just remind everyone that this particular version of the budget does not include any use of undesigned surplus funds for the upcoming year. Those increases that I referenced in public safety and those two positions account for about forty-two percent of the overall budget increase, which we'll talk in more in detail a little bit later. The other portion of the budget, the other significant portion of the budget, about forty-five percent of those contractual obligations and costs associated with the town's employee, not new employees, the existing employees we have today. Debt service and bonds, related to bonds rather, stays pretty flat. We have a small decrease in the cost related to some lease financing. And I want to make two more comments before I move on into the greater details. First off, the budget that I gave you for town operations and the summary sheet that includes Board of Education operations is shown in comparison to the originally approved budget from the referendum last year. And that's because of two primary reasons. One, you'll recall that the town meeting made an amendment to the Board of Education budget partway through the year using cash, using unobligated surplus funds, added eighty-five thousand dollars to the Board of Education budget for armed security officers. Additionally, later in the year, the town meeting added one point one five million dollars to the cap, to the transfer to capital improvements to cover half of the cost or the town's portion of the cost of the middle school roof project. So the reason I've tried to present the budget from the original is that I felt it was, it's a bit of a strong phrase, but I'm going to say disingenuous, to compare the revised budget. First off, we lose the full cost of the ASOs. Don't take that as commentary on whether I think they're appropriate or not. I think they are. But we also would have shown a dramatic reduction in the overall cost of capital improvements by including the one point one five million dollar one-time change. So I want you to know that as I go through this, that's the comparison I'm making, original budget, referendum budget, if you will, to the current draft. The other change is the fact that between the time I put my version of the budget out and today, the Capital Improvements Committee finished its work on the draft capital improvements plan. And in their final meeting, they made some reductions to their overall recommendation. So that reduction included a drop of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in the total tax levy request. And so I will make my presentation based on as if that were had been the request made to the Board of Finance, which that would then be in your hands next. Okay, so that's how I choose to proceed, if you allow. That leads us to the overall budget. So as revised, the budget is proposed right now at fifty-four million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And you can see the outline there in terms of the pie about where that money goes. Two-thirds of that funding is for the operational expenses related to education. About a quarter of that is the operational activities related to the town. And you have the balance of that, or about roughly ten percent being debt and those transfers to capital. That change, up to fifty-four million dollars, is a little over three million dollars of an increase overall. If I break that out, the total allocation of that increase is a little over two million dollars of change in funding for the Board of Education operational expenses. About nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, or just under nine hundred and forty thousand dollars for overall town, for general government operations, town operations. And then, as I alluded to earlier, there is a small reduction in debt service this year related to leases. And again, that final proposal from the Capital Improvements Committee actually entails a small reduction in the proposed levy for capital improvements. Throughout the evening and throughout my presentation, I'll make some comparisons to previous years to show some trends and to show kind of where we're going in terms of how we spend the community's dollars. So this is the first of those, and this is again, just to show you that ratio of how our dollars are being spent is relatively unchanged from Board of Education to general government operations. The change, of course, as you can see, is the increase in the amount of debt service that the town has taken on with the two major projects that have occurred in this ten-year interval, the high school and the town hall. Next, I want to talk a little bit about major changes in expenditures. Remember, there was nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of increased cost in general government. I want to go through about a half a dozen of where the biggest of those changes are for your information. So first, as I alluded to, public safety. Overall, with the two major changes that are discussed or at least drafted into the budget, there's about three hundred and forty thousand dollars of increased costs there. Hundred and seventy thousand, hundred and seventy-three thousand, and increased support for the East Hampton Ambulance Association to defray their costs. And the cost of a police officer, the lieutenant position, including their benefits, a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and change. Medical benefits. This is a big jump for the regular staff. This is, this hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars contemplates a known seven point one percent increase to the premiums for existing staff. There are no additional staff, no new staff in here, but for existing staffing levels, we have that seven point one percent increase. Plus, we know that there are some amendments coming or changes coming to the levels of insurance that our staff are taking. So that's included as well. Salary increases, again, for existing staff. The full-time employees have, in total, about a hundred eleven thousand, a hundred twelve thousand dollars of increased wage costs. That is a total of about two point three percent. The general wage adjustment is built in at two point three five percent. And we know that there have been some changeover, or whether there has been some changeover. So some staff are coming in at lower numbers. Overall, the balance is to two point three. So small increase in part-time staff. This is the last year, as you'll hear later on, of the increase in the minimum wage for many of our part-time staff. We have offset that, however, with some reduction in staffing, primarily in building and land use. Pension and retirement, this year, or every year, but this year, the audited costs for the pension, the defined benefit program are going up about ninety-five thousand dollars based on those contributions needed. And then the defined contribution, which is the other portion of the staff that have that different program, go up primarily related to their wages, so about seven thousand dollars. Another, the last two changes are in the fifty to sixty thousand dollar range. Waste removal at the transfer station is going to jump. We propose, we anticipate next year about fifty-seven thousand dollars. That relates not only to the increased cost of disposing of the bulky waste that gets deposited there by our residents, but the bigger portion of that increase, as I understand it, is related to the cost of yard waste, sticks, branches, trees, et cetera, that get brought there, that we now are having to pay a fee to get ground and disposed. So that's a big jump, a big jump at the transfer station. And the last is that reference change to the senior center staffing that I mentioned of about fifty-two thousand five hundred. Again, that's the anticipated increased cost in the salary plus benefits package as well. The total of all of those figures is eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars of that nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand increase. The balance of that, the balance between those two figures, of course, is spread out in smaller numbers throughout the entire balance of the budget. Again, chart for history, state, you can see in the, in the ten years of this particular chart, we've increased, we are anticipating an increase of eight staff member, eight staff members, rather. The jump you can see at the last year is the two that I referenced, the senior center and the police officer. Debt, as I alluded to, the big portions of debt are the town hall and the high school. You can see that in the pie on the bottom of the page. You'll also recall, last year, I indicated to you that the cost of the town's debt peaked in the current fiscal year, that is fiscal year twenty-three. And you can see, if your eye, and you pull it really close, you can see that fifty-two thousand or so coming off of the lease portion of the debt. And we begin that, that now downhill slide on the cost of the debt service that we have. So that begins this year, and we are just a little bit lower than last year. Bond amount is about the same, increase in bond debt payments is offset by a reduction in interest or vice versa. I don't recall which at the moment. And then, like I said, the reduction in lease. Capital expenses, as I alluded to, the Capital Committee has finished its work and has made a recommendation on the overall cost of capital improvements. It is a, it is a, for the current, for the upcoming fiscal year, it is proposed at two point four million dollars of capital improvements and equipment purchases, broken down, as you can see, by the categories below. The biggest chunk of that is in the public works area, that of course is roads, or half of that is road improvements. That figure was reduced slightly, and as I alluded to in materials that were sent to you earlier, there was discussion of developing in the long-term or perhaps near-term a bonding program to get after some roads in a more aggressive way. But nonetheless, about half of that, eight hundred and ten, is in roads. The rest is in watershed improvements and watershed work as well. Board of Education is the other big chunk, the other thirty or thirty-one percent. Over half of that is technology improvements and replacements at the schools, and then some security enhancements, and then a myriad of other items that we'll go into in more detail later. Bigger chunk of the, the bigger important piece for this evening is the overall capital revenues. As I alluded to earlier, the, there is an extensive use of American Rescue Plan Act funds that the town received to offset those capital expenditure costs. You can see about one point five million dollars in that big, is it brown or green? I forgive my colorblind eyes. That big pie piece to the right, that one point five million dollars is, is a proposed use of ARPA funds. You'll also see in the asterisk below the legend on the bottom, there is an additional five hundred and thirty thousand dollars that goes to, you'll recall, we have a sinking fund for equipment and for vehicles. It's a direct expense in that sinking fund, which doesn't play into the capital plan directly, but it is an intended use of ARPA dollars to offset capital costs. So in total, there's a recommendation to use about two million dollars of ARPA dollars to fund this year's capital improvements. That would leave about five hundred thousand, for those of you interested. It would leave about five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA dollars available to be reallocated later. But the big chunk of that then leaves with, after some grants and some other expenses coming over, about eight hundred and nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars to be transferred from the current tax levy over to the capital improvement fund to offset the cost of capital. It's a slight reduction, that's that three thousand and change reduction from last year. History of capital is this next chart, and this is the ten-year, again, comparison of how much we have allocated over time to capital improvements in town. You can see that, for the most part, we do about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. We've been doing that since at least the fiscal year twenty-fourteen. As you can imagine, eight hundred thousand dollars doesn't go by as far in twenty-twenty-three or twenty-four as it did in twenty-fourteen. So that's an important factor. Again, I'll go back to that. That's an important thing for the community to consider, how it wants to fund on the long-term capital improvements. But you can see the tenure history there, about eight hundred thousand dollars. Under the other side of the equation now, revenue side, and how much we expect to bring in in revenues. In this case, I'll talk a little briefly about non-tax revenues. Generally, as you've heard me say from this podium before, the non-tax revenues of the town, specifically the operating grants that we receive, have continued to go down. And we'll talk about that again in a little bit, in a little bit as well. But in general, our, our non-tax revenues are kind of flat. They're usually associated with user fees and other things that can change pretty routinely and pretty regularly. This year, I think we're pretty confident that we can call out about a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar increase in non-tax revenues. Interestingly enough, that first one, although I just finished saying our, our grants have continued to go down, our education grants have kind of flattened out, even though we're supposed to be losing money. We haven't been. Our education grants have kind of flattened out, even though we're supposed to be losing money, we haven't been. Uh and in fact, there's a small increase of about, I think it's sixty thousand dollars on the education grant sign uh this year. Uh you'll recall last year, that second bullet point, you'll recall last year, we talked about the fact that the state changed the motor vehicle tax program. They put it, they lowered the cap on that program uh to thirty two dollars and change. And in doing so, they implemented, as they often do when they first start, a a change that impacts municipalities. They started a program to backfill our revenue stream for that. Uh so that program is basically one year arrears, and so this year we'll get an additional hundred and sixty three thousand dollars from that program. Because you'll recall, the value of all of our used cars went up last year uh pretty significantly. Anyway, we'll catch, we'll catch a little bit more in that particular revenue stream this year. Also, also interestingly, because of the way the town invests its money and because of the instruments in which we are allowed to invest. We actually will make a little bit more in our investment portfolio this this upcoming year. Uh because of the types that we're in, so there's a small increase there, you'll recall that had, that had all but virtually been eliminated in the past. Uh we increased that back up uh by about ninety thousand dollars. And lastly, as I alluded to, those licenses and fees and permits, sort of those other revenue streams, uh we felt pretty confident that we could just bump that up slightly. Uh to account for ongoing levels of activity, we don't want to go up too high because we don't want to have to come down uh if that activity drops off in the future too much. This is that ten year history review again, uh that shows kind of the direct relationship between the loss of those grants over time, those operating grants over time. Uh as the state cuts the education funding to at least East Hampton. Uh has caused us uh with the lack of other options to move those dollars to grant, or rather to property tax. So you can see that uh the two sides of that uh of that impact. The next piece that plays importantly into uh town's revenue stream and how. The community is impacted by that is the grand list. Of course, this is the value of all uh property in town that is taxable, uh personal property, real property, and motor vehicles. So the grand list this year is a, is a um is not a revaluation year, it's just a. It catches the, only the improvements that have been made, or only the changes that have been made. So this is the twenty two grand list as of October one of last year. We now have a value of uh about one point two billion dollars um accessible, taxable uh properties in town. That's an increase of about twenty one million. Or one point seven percent. Motor vehicles account for about forty percent of that increase, or uh as you can see, they're a little over eight million dollars. If we were to apply the increase amount to that, because again, this is for new cars that have been acquired. They're on new car, on vehicles, remember, there's still one more year of market value uh assessment. Um we think the big hit was last year, it seems to have not been so significant this year, so a lot of this is new vehicles acquired by uh the. The community, but anyway, if you look at that eight point two million dollars and apply the the tax rate. Uh that would be about two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars of of new tax revenue, or of tax revenue. I don't like to call it new one, motor vehicles, because of the point that I just made about the way that assessment is done. Next year, this becomes a depreciation schedule. So when there's changes, we know that it's a new vehicle, because if we keep our vehicles, they'll continue to decrease in value. The the market value concept goes away uh in the future. The other changes in real property and personal property, those are those hard tangible things that we live in and and live on. Uh and are used in manufacturing and other activities in town. They increase about twelve point eight or the balance of that uh twenty one million dollar uh increase. And in, for the most part, this is new value, this is new stuff that didn't exist last year. So it's new houses that were built, it's additions to houses, it's improvements to houses and those sorts of things. That does account for about four hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, what I refer to as new revenue. The breakdown is there, eighty four percent, the vast majority of it, of course, is um is in real estate value, that's the land and the improvements thereon. And you can see that the, in the uh last ten years or so, uh the community has continued to recover from the the recession of a number of years ago. Uh and has improved by about a hundred million dollars in value. All of that, that I've talked about for the last several minutes, kind of rolls into this last page. For two, uh that fifty four million, seven hundred and sixty seven thousand dollar overall budget, offset by. Uh about nine point seven million dollars in revenue streams from grants and other certain, other funds. Leads us to a property tax need under the current budget of fifty four, or rather, forty five million dollars and change. Each mill, as you recall, is worth a little bit over one point uh oh eight million dollars. Uh based on our our anticipated collection rate and. And uh those overall values that I talked about before, which would lead, if it were unchanged, to a mid, a rate on personal and real property. Of thirty six dollars and ninety cents. Uh motor vehicles still remain the same, because we are, uh we'll stay at the cap of the thirty two, forty six. But ultimately, of course, as we'll see, as we talk about in in the future, uh those decisions, the mill rate decisions are ultimately the board of finances decision at the end. To determine how it wants to raise uh the funds that we need. After the final budget is done. A little bit of a different look at this, that mill rate increase is not insignificant, of course, it's two dollars and twenty four cents. That's about a six and a half percent increase in the mill rate to accomplish uh that particular tax lip. Those are my comments, and as I alluded to, uh this is the schedule for the rest of the day, or for the rest of the week, and the rest of your consideration. And ultimately, the town's consideration of the budget, this all moves towards a referendum in sometime between May one and June seven. And then, as I mentioned, after that, the board of finance gets back and uh will make a determination on. So those are my comments, this is where folks can make uh submit to you and to the town council their own remarks and how they want uh and where they can get additional information. If you have any questions on this, whether specific or general, I'm happy to answer.
I have one question.
Sure.
So in the presentation, you said it would set a mill rate of thirty six point nine. In the book we were presented, it says thirty seven point oh one.
Right.
So just looking for clarification on the change.
That's that reduction of a hundred and twenty four thousand or so from the capital.
Thank you.
That's a direct change to the lip.
All I got.
Okay. What's that? Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate that several of you have been to our board meetings, which began on the budget back in January. So I'm not going to repeat the whole thing, but I just did want to have uh just a few, few highlights. Uh you heard me say back in January that the goal of this year's budget was to take last year's budget and simply slide it forward one year. Um so everything that we had in twenty twenty two and twenty three, we just moved forward to twenty three, twenty four. Very little has been added to the budget, in fact, is one less, or it was presented to my board with a one less certified teacher. So the education budget request that I presented in January does use the revised budget. Not trying to be disingenuous with that, but we've been paying the armed security officers since January. So uh that is, I'm using the revised uh budget figure. Um so the request is for thirty six uh three five two four seven eight. It's about a five point eight increase in January. Keep in mind, six million nine hundred thousand comes from the state, about another almost half a billion from uh grants. Uh the Board of Ed made some changes in March, very minor changes, they added about forty eight thousand, one hundred seventy seven dollars uh to the budget. Close to the five point uh nine four, using the uh revised budget figures. And you know, you've you've heard me talk a lot about um why the budget is the budget it was. And I just want to go back for a second, because Karen and I worked very hard, even before we presented it to the board. Uh to keep the number under six. And I find myself having trouble even saying that, because I've always presented to you a budget of three and change. And this year, it's just been impossible to do that. Just carrying what we have this year to next year, you're looking at this year's budget at what it costs to have the same thing next, next year. If you've read the River East or anything in the Hartford Current, towns are coming in nine and ten percent. There was no way Karen and I were going to present a a nine percent budget to you. When we crafted this from the beginning, I told principals, we were basically going to ride the same budget uh forward. But that does not excuse us from the duty of care that we have to children at this point. Uh obviously, we care about their academic growth, but we have really taken on student mental health and and wellness. To agree, to a degree that I just have not seen in my thirty nine years of of education. So as we added things, uh we added a lot of things that weren't going to cost anything. Uh we're adding a anonymous tip line, we have a self-made anonymous tip line. We're going to join the Sandy Hook Say Something Anonymous tip line. The only difference in this is if children are um entering information about themselves and they're having thoughts of suicide. There is actually twenty four seven counseling with the Sandy Hook um tip line. So if someone indicates on the tip line that they are in severe crisis, uh someone from the Sandy Hook uh tip line will call them twenty four seven. So it is a, it is a model, does not cost anything, it's funded by Sandy Hook Promise. The other thing that we've added, and we've already got these in place, which we're thrilled with, are school-based mental health uh centers in each school. This is beyond our own social worker and psychology support for students. This is counseling that really is family-based uh for families that are looking for outside services, which are very difficult to get. We have one in each school now, they've been operating since January, there's already a waiting list at all four schools uh for this support. Once again, doesn't cost anything to us, it's being funded by community healthcare. One of the things that was not going to be in the budget, if you recall my presentation, was an additional psychologist that we got from a grant from the state of Connecticut. Uh Rod Moser, our special ed director, applied to a different grant through the state of Connecticut. And we now have that one point O school psychologist for an additional three years. So that's a nice victory uh for Rod, that position will be grant that funded, for grant funded uh for three years. Uh one program that is going to cost us a little money, we participate, as you know, in the RAM uh manufacturing partnership. It costs about one thousand dollars per student, but we are limited to usually two to four students, based on the openings that they have. Uh we are going to participate next year, in addition to that, to the E Camp program out of the Goodwin College. It's an afternoon program, they will send a bus to pick up the students, and it's a half-day manufacturing program. Uh in in fact, this one includes a pre-apprenticeship program of two hundred hours and paid internships, et et cetera. It's about twenty five hundred dollars per student, we're hoping to get five or six students in. But the whole program right now is limited next year to thirty students, they're hoping to double it and triple it in the next several years. And then, if you were at the budget meetings in January, I explained to you that the Connecticut General Assembly is requiring schools. To change to a designated reading program. The current reading program we use uh is not on the list of approved reading programs. I've applied for a one-year waiver, a financial hardship waiver, but we do need to start piloting a few of the materials. So we've put in about twenty thousand dollars to pilot it. After next year's pilot, it could be as much as two hundred thousand dollars uh to buy the restate required. Let me say that again, the state-required, general assembly-approved list of five to six reading programs. Uh they're good reading programs, I like the reading program we have now, our teachers are used to it, but we are going to pilot a couple. Uh but I'm going to be standing here next year, potentially asking you for a couple hundred thousand dollars for a state-required uh reading program. You know, we call last year, we put funding in to switch our K five math program. Uh which had run its course, it was no longer being published, Go Math, we switched to Bridges, running a tremendous amount of success on that. Uh if you come to one of our board meetings in in April or May, Mary Clark is going to give you some very exciting news. On an increase in our math scores, just in the first half of of using this program. And of course, our children are back full time, and uh we've had some strong support from our ESAR-funded math specialists. We've got to shift our six through seven uh program, because that also goes out of publication. We're going to switch completely to grade six and seven. You, Bridges is not uh programmed for uh middle school, we're going to switch to illustrative math. As you can see, I shouldn't say only fifteen thousand, where a reading series is going to be about fifty thousand per grade level. Uh we can do both grades in math for about fifteen thousand. So basically, what I'm I'm telling you is that if we like everything that we have in the schools this year. Just to move it forward one year is just under six percent. And that's with one teacher less. Now, if you were at the last board meeting, they did add just a few items. Uh there was a plea from our high school uh biking club. We have a very popular middle school biking club that involves about forty students. There's nothing for them as they get to the high school, so we're hoping to add the high school biking club. I did not include that, but the board felt it was important to include. Uh I am guilty of of removing supplies, I think one of my board members was upset, because. It apparently got to us that the middle school didn't have enough basketballs for PE. So we are asking to restore four thousand dollars in supplies across all uh grades K through twelve. There was a plea from the music department to uh increase cost in choir uh accompaniments for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, there was a hundred fifty dollars, I'm sorry, can I say a thousand, a hundred fifty thousand dollars? Yeah, we could buy a couple new pianos, uh Steinway pianos for that, and include that in there. Sorry about that. And then the part-time, a a partial restoration of two positions that I had eliminated. I had eliminated the high school math specialist, which is a point four position. And I eliminated a point four psychology, psychologist uh that we've been using K five. And the reason I eliminated them was because our ABA program, our program for students with autism. Moves from the s- middle school, it now graduates up to the high school. So I've got to add an ABA special ed teacher. My plan, so it was not additional cost, was to fund that by eliminating, eliminating those two positions. The board thought that was a little radical, and what they'd like to do is, instead of bringing one back, they're going to bring both back. But instead of point four or two days a week, both will come back at at one day a week. So that's the addition of forty eight uh thousand dollars. I think that this alarms uh especially my board member Sal, who is wondering why it's going to take up to two hundred and uh year two thousand twenty eight. Uh to get recovered from pandemic losses. But what I want to show you is um the state produces what they call on track for graduation. Percentage of ninth graders earning at least six full year credits in the particular year. And this was um twenty one, twenty two, on track for graduation. The schools I've compared us to are always the same twenty school districts that I've compared us to in the last several years. Uh when I show you our uh the median income or the price per student, the per pupil expenditure, these are the twenty towns that I've used. These are the town, they don't have uh regional partnerships, they're all towns, some are bigger than us, some are smaller than us. Uh but you can see our our students are doing well. If you look at the bottom, in two thousand eighteen nineteen, before the pandemic, ninety eight point five were on track for graduation at the end of freshman year. That's kind of considered a critical year, you can see it dropped a little to ninety six point seven, uh but no school headed it, had hit uh ninety eight point, point five. When we look at the percentage of high school students, grade. When we look at the percentage of high school students, grades eleven and twelve, participating in what they consider college-ready courses, like AP courses or dual-credit courses, even during the pandemic, that grew. We were eighty four point two percent before the pandemic, then after the pandemic, or right in the middle of the pandemic, twenty one, twenty two, as we were coming out of it, that number's grown up to ninety three percent. And that's, that's also in the, in the range of where I would expect us to be. As far as absenteeism goes, if you look to the far right, the state average is, the dark blue is pre-pandemic, the light blue is post-pandemic. We all struggled last year with increased absentee rates, and of course, kids were getting COVID last school year more than even during the shutdown or the year that we, we were in, in hybrid forms. But you can see, I think we've got that under control, we did not fare as, as bad as some of those districts. Now, here's, here's the driver in, in, in our cost this year. So this is the state of Connecticut, the red line going, or the maroon line going across the top is the total enrollment in special ed increasing as the total enrollment of students across the state drops. So we're all seeing more and more students being diagnosed with special ed concerns. And, you know, they can range from, from minor concerns, learning disabilities that we can, we can take care of. But what we're seeing and what other districts are seeing are just much more complicated and, and costly situations. And, you know, I, I want to tell you that, you know, when I talk about our, our duty of care, our most critical special need children and, and our students with mental health concerns, they are time-intensive. It, in order to meet their needs, it's time-intensive, it's staff-intensive, and it's become very cost-intensive. And that is, that is just the reality. I put this in, you know, that annual book that I gave you out in January, take a look at this because we're still doing our absolute best to educate students appropriately in-house, but we're finding it is getting more and more difficult for the kids with severe needs to educate them even in these specialized intensive programs. And if you look to far right here, you need to see no cost in the ABA program for the high school. Next year will be the first year that this program has graduated up to the schools. So we're anticipating three students from middle, middle school will now be in the high school. And, you know, my original plan was to eliminate two part-time positions to pay for that new teacher required for that. And right now, the way the budget is, it will pay for half of that position. Please take time, I, I don't need to go through these, but if you have any questions on Wednesday night, I can show you these slides. They're pretty similar in the fact that we save a great deal of money, the blue would be what it would cost to outplace our students. This is what it costs to, to do it in, in-house. And then, I, I, I look at that number and you just see the, the shock of this year in that for the last five years, we've been riding with, pretty steady with eight or seven outplacements. This year, we jumped to twelve, and I actually have that arrow there because we are looking for a placement for our thirteenth student. We've been having, because there's so many students from across the state, the state being outplaced, there's, there's not room in some of these facilities for, for students, they've reached their, their capacity. So, you know, that, that word of volatile, volatility and unpredictability, unpredictability in special ed funding, it's an article from, from Katie Roy in January eleventh, twenty twenty. We were still seeing a concern with special ed outplacement and special ed costs, it is, it is just really multiplied. I know at our tri-board meeting, we talked about students with special needs moving in. I, I think what you're seeing is a percentage of people moving into East Hampton is going to be a percentage of, of special need parents. This is a Middlesex County annual housing permits, I don't probably know this anyway, but East Hampton is second to Clinton, and the latest is sixty nine in the year twenty twenty one. And then, this is what it looks like with, with local towns. So of our local towns, everybody is kind of flat on housing permits, and that big giant red line sticking up is, is East Hampton from twenty twenty one. We, we talked earlier, and you know, I always bring this up, these are the same twenty towns that I compare us to. Our pupil, per pupil expenditure always is in the bottom tier as well as our Durham towns, we're always right about the halfway point. In the book I gave you this year, I shared with you the change in staff as Dave did from two thousand fourteen to two thousand, or two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three, as I anticipated. But this is, this is some fascinating information. I invite you to go to the School and State Finance Project, I gave you the website, and you can pick five different schools and compare your hometown to it. I just happened to pick East Adam and Portland, Regional School District seventeen is Haddon-Killingworth. And they have their own high school, Haddon-Killingworth High School, Regional School District is Middlefield, Durham and Coggin-Chog. I picked these because we play these in sports, they're all in the Shoreline Conference. You can go in and pick any towns you want to compare us to. But as far as certified teachers, we have more students per teacher than, than these towns. Now, twelve point four looks low, our classes are certainly not twelve point four, they're in the twenties. But the, this includes the art teachers, the PE teachers, the elective teachers, et cetera. Administrators, everybody always says, you know, there's way too many administrators in our district. There are basically seven assistant principals and principals, a director of curriculum, a director of special ed, and, and the superintendent. So you look at that number and compare it to the local schools, we're certainly not a hundred eighty-six students per administrator. As far as certified support staff, and these are reading specialists and math specialists, we're actually in pretty good shape there. We added a couple this year. The non-certified support staff is our parent educators and our interventionists and even our counselors, a hundred thirty-eight per a hundred thirty-eight students per one counselor. And then, school nurses who got us through pandemic, three hundred fifty-seven students per one nurse, there's basically one nurse in each, in each building. This is something that, that superintendents are worried about, that there's going to be a bloodletting after ARPA dollars run out in the fall of twenty twenty-four. As you realize, we have one more year of, of ARPA dollars. You know, as they start complaining because they, their two million dollars in funding is going to run out, I, I'm like, I wish I had that problem. When you hear about the, the cliff from the ARPA dollars, we're actually going to be fined because we've got six hundred ninety-eight thousand. We've been spending two hundred thousand roughly per year on those two math specialists. My pledge is, if we don't see results, then we would not continue to put them in the budget, but that's a decision for twenty-four, twenty-five if we keep those, those math specialists. So I look forward to Wednesday night, I hope you have a lot of questions for us. Mary will be there, Karen will be there, board members will be there, six thirty to eight thirty. We're willing to stay as long as you've had questions for, usually you start us at four in the afternoon. But if it gets to six thirty, I'm sure it will be done around ten thirty, eleven o'clock. Thank you very much.
Do you want to have questions with Paul? Yeah, I do. Karen? I had asked for an organizational chart that I never received.
Okay. Oh, we can, I'll email that to you.
Okay, you can email it to all of us. Thank you.
Um, Paul, I, I just have a question, I know you guys are heavily mandated. Christina's brought that to the forefront, and I'm just wondering, I'm assuming that you have a lot of connections with other superintendents, you know, like in our area. Has there been a letter drafted where all of you were signing it, that, you know, pointing out, you know, how the towns are being strangled by their mandates, that they're not funded? And I'm just wondering if that's happened, I know some of the boards have been speaking with Irene, but I think just, you know, one school system or one person from a board, you're, you're not going to get the attention where if you add Portland, Colchester, Harborough, you know.
I think the biggest outcry, Bridgette, has been on the mandated reading program. It's based on the science of reading, and we all believe in the science of reading, Mary could give you a forty-five minute discussion on the science of reading. However, to let schools know that you've got to abandon what you've used and not even transition to a new program, and here are the five or six programs that you must choose is, is beyond anything that the General Assembly has, has done. And there are, I know the organization I belong to, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents has, has had meeting with the Commissioner of Education and with legislators. And we are working hard to at least extend it a couple more years or make it optional rather than, than, than mandatory. But, you know, it, it sounds like a great idea when everybody's voting, of course, we support the science of reading and everybody should use one of these great reading programs, but they don't realize that what you've done is, you know, put, put two hundred thousand is, is, is a lot of money for a town like East Hampton to reinvest in, in reading when we have spent the last five, six years training our, our, our teachers in the the Teachers College Reading and Writing Program, we've sent them for training, we've invested in materials, and now we're being told that you can no longer use those materials.
Yeah. No, I'm just curious if, if, just to kind of keep the momentum going, as you, with, with the legislators, it's a situation where you have to be in their face constantly in order to get the attention, but one-off letters aren't going to do it.
No, it's not the letters, you've got to go and testify, I waited in line, I was numbered like one hundred and fifty to testify for new lunches, and even when you're testifying, they're walking in and out of the room, you know, it's a panel this big and sometimes there's two there, and I know it's a long afternoon for them, but, you know, when you're one hundred and fifty, it's like, oh my god. I'm here for four hours and, and, you know, I, I even joked because as I got up to speak, like three or four of them walked out just to get a cup of coffee or lunch or, or something like that, I wanted to say.
We're, we're paying you to be here for Christ's sake. It does seem like the state is creeping more into the curriculum where they really don't belong. Or was it last, was it last year that you had a certain course that you had to offer?
That is correct, yeah, and we purchased materials and, you know, we're offering the course, and, you know, that's not as drastic. I, I think what, what the State Department of Education is trying to do, they're trying to develop model curriculums so that stu, that, so the district can use those model curriculums, but they don't indicate that you must buy this series or this series, or this book, or, or, or that book. So if, if the legislators want to help us, they would hire enough people at the state level to develop these model curriculum and then say, you have to use this particular curriculum.
I have a follow-up on that. So you mentioned about them being the General Assembly, was it the general, was it an actual act that said we have to use these five programs or today deflect to the SDE, State Department of Education to choose those five?
Correct, so the General Assembly said that schools will adopt reading programs based, based on the science of reading, and it was a responsibility of the State Department of Education to come up with a list.
So the State Department of Education could have came up with ten, twenty, but they picked five?
I think they're up to seven because two of them, two of them are considered culturally destructive by an independent group.
The seven that have been selected to are open source in these two different publishers, but there are seven that are named and they're, it followed a particular process that was outlined in the legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the, okay, Bridgette, all right. I have a list of vehicles for the town, but I don't have one for the Board of Ed.
We can get you that.
That'd be good.
It's short. I'll bring that Wednesday night.
More questions from town or school? What's the quiet?
We need to one second.
Okay. I haven't got any discussion. I have a motion to adjourn.
So.